Hello, so I call this work session regular meeting Tuesday, November 9th to order. Ms. Robach, can we please get a roll call?
Mr. Birdnick? Mrs. Brancato?
Here.
Mrs. Crossit?
Here.
Mr. Dixon?
Here.
Mrs. Islandberg?
Here.
Mr. Godickson?
Present.
Mr. Lyden?
Mr. Martin?
Present.
Mr. Panofsky? Seven present.
Thank you. Can we all please stand for the Pudge of Legions?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. God bless America.
Okay, um, for announcements, we had an executive session from 5:15 to 6:50 regarding legal issues and personnel. All right, did anyone else have any other announcements?
Madam President, yeah, I would just like to recognize two things if I could, since we haven't had the opportunity to do this recently, but I took note that a week or two ago, the William Tennant football team, which prior to that had been winless, managed to do a wonderful job in their last game of the season and win by a significant margin. At the same time, a young man in 10th grade by the name of Raimir Newkirk managed to score seven touchdowns in that one football game and later was selected as the Courier-Times Player of the Week. I think any accomplishment such as that, seven touchdowns, I thought that might be a school record, but I understand someone else may have scored seven touchdowns. I don't know who that was and when, but I think we ought to recognize the young man for that wonderful accomplishment and at the same time not to be accused of being sexist. There was a young lady by the name of Michaela Hanson who did a wonderful job in a cross-country state meet, was the district, was the league champion and so forth. So we have young people to succeed in athletics in addition to scholarship and the arts. I think we ought to recognize them in that way and make it part of the minutes, if I might.
Absolutely, Mr. Martin, that's, that's perfect, yes. Did anyone else have any announcements? Mr. Dixon?
I would just like to give a shout out to my, uh, my son's first grade teacher. My son is currently at McDonald's and, and to McDonald Elementary in general. I ran into Principal Ortiz the other day and I expressed this, but I have a degree in English literature myself. I teach a class at Rowan University in it and so I think of myself as being fairly knowledgeable about language and linguistics and things like this. And he comes home to me the other day and starts talking about phonemes as parts of words and asked me, you know, told me what the diacritical mark over a, if you're writing the word cat on the board for a first grader to read, there's that little curvy line you put over the A to let them know it's a short A instead of a long A. I don't know if anybody here knows what it's called. I certainly didn't, but my son came home and did. It's called a pervay and so I certainly learned something. So I just want to thank Mrs. Dorazio and Mr. Ortiz. I'm deeply impressed with the work going on there.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Anybody else? Okay, moving forward, um, presentation, student presentations, William Tennant High School, Emma Weinstein?
Sorry, just one minute, I'll pull it up. While I locate my document, I'm just going to introduce myself. My name is Emma Weinstein. I am the Student Government Junior Vice President. I'm filling in for the president today. It's my first time here, I'm very honored.
You're doing great.
Thank you. Here it is. Okay. The major thing that I have up here is that we just closed the first marking period and starting on the fifth, we opened the second marking period and everything so far has been going smoothly. William Tennant's chapter of Mu Alpha Theta, the Math National Honor Society, inducted their new members into the club last week, so congratulations to all the new inductees. Key Club will be hosting their annual blood drive starting tomorrow, November 10th and ending November 11th for all students and staff throughout the school day. Tennant will also be hosting a Veterans Day ceremony this Thursday morning to recognize our veterans and those who are currently serving. Powder puff practices have started and we will be having our powder puff pep rally and football game next Tuesday, um, the 16th. Finally, students will be having November 24th and 26th for parent teacher conferences and it will lead into the beginning of Thanksgiving break. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Well done. Um, next presentation, Middle Bucks MBIT, Elise Jones?
Hello. My name is Alize Jones and I am a senior at William Tennant High School and a Level 300 cosmetology student at the MBIT program. The Horticulture and Landscape and Design Program students facilitate the design and installation of the Never Forget Garden at the Washington Crossings National Cemetery. This project in partnership with the Travis Mannion Foundation frames the background of two of the cemetery's memorial walls and is in place to commemorate the 100th anniversary of the tombs of the unknown soldier. Students from all three levels of the program participated in the Never Forget Garden design, planning and installation. Plant material and mulch were donated by Gaspar Landscapes and Victory Gardens. Middle Bucks Institute of Technology is hosting a virtual open house for middle school and high school students on Thursday, November 18th, 2021, beginning at 6:00 PM. There will be a premiere video to kick off our virtual open house featuring some of our Skills USA officers. You can also explore our campus and programs with an interactive map, virtually meet our teachers and take part in our questions and, questions and answers sessions using the Zoom platform. Perspective students are invited to sign up to the shadow where they can spend half of the day in a program that they are interested to, to them. Visit for more information on the virtual open house and access to the exciting interactive event. The automotive technology and collision repair technology programs will be raising money for the month of November to help the auto dealers caring for kids foundation. Purchase codes for underprivileged kids in the Philadelphia area. Skills USA is hosting their Fall Leadership Conference at Middle Bucks, my bad, um, at Bucks County Technology Technical High School on November 18th. Middle Bucks will have 21 students attending this event where they will learn about public speaking, governmental practices, team building skills. We would like to remind everyone that you can learn more about the latest happenings at Middle Bucks Institute of Technology by liking us on Facebook, following us on Instagram, Twitter and visiting our videos on YouTube. Thank you for your time and the opportunity to keep you informed about what is happening at MBIT.
Thank you, you did a great job. All right, next is Elementary and Secondary School, Mr. Gabriel?
Good evening, everybody. Uh, we wanted to take this opportunity on behalf of the instructional leadership team to share a little bit about the emergency and secondary school emergency relief or ESER funds that we have received in the district. So we wanted to talk, take a look at basically the why, how and what behind our proposed use of the grants. Uh, out of all the norms that we typically go through prior to a session, I think two that are really relevant to this particular conversation are keeping decisions in the best interest of our students and then considering is that statement, assumption, interpretation or fact. Uh, as you'll see in the next few slides, we leaned heavily on, uh, our student population as well as feedback and data in order to make some of the recommendations that we're making and decisions we're making about how to use these ESER funds. So, uh, for those of you that aren't aware, there are currently four grants, four ESER grants that we've received, ESER 1 CARES Act, the ESER 2, the ARP ESER and most recently the ARP ESER 7% set asides. All of these collectively, um, are given to schools to address the COVID-19, the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic. Each one carries a little bit of nuance in terms of what it can be used for or percentage breakdown, which we'll get into in a, in a couple of slides. So the next, I'm not going to read those to you, uh, but they're basically just definitions of the three different, the three different, um, three of the four, um, because the ARP set aside is just an, an out sheet of ARP ESER, uh, the three different grants. Guides for grant use, as I mentioned earlier, we're looking at our student body, uh, and sort of our breakdown, both economics as well as ethnicity in terms of how we made decisions on the grants, specifically our 41.27%, as you'll see later, of economically disadvantaged students. We're doing some professional development with our staff around, uh, teaching with poverty in mind, uh, so that, that's one of the big areas that we're, we're focusing on. And then feedback, uh, this, there have been a, a number of different committees. Uh, the Act 48 Committee, which is the faculty-based professional learning committee, meets once a year and we gain feedback from our staff. We've mentioned this before the board, we are on corrective action at the state level for a number of different, uh, areas, IDEA, federal programs, and then a few of our schools are on TSI or ATSI improvement. COVID-related facilities needs, uh, we had sent out a couple of thought exchanges last year throughout the pandemic and we're getting feedback from, uh, faculty, students and parents on, uh, needs related to COVID. Our Hanover researchers, we've talked about over and over, uh, reports on state of mathematics, reading, English language arts, unfinished learning, which is our term for learning loss, uh, social emotional learning. Uh, as if you remember back in January, we gave you sort of a big picture view of the status of student academic performance and where we sit in the county and in southeastern Pennsylvania. We'll be rehashing a, a newer version of that this upcoming winter with updates. Student and faculty staff supports and then, uh, again, the, the more thought exchanges. And we now have a portion on our website that has the reports from past thought exchanges from the past about two and a half years that anybody can access and, and take a look at what was discussed to some of the questions we had asked. So we, we really took a look at a lot of the different feedback mechanisms, uh, at the different levels to, to make some decisions around programming. Uh, we wanted to share some good news at first and really try to refocus on these moves are being made to help increase student data, uh, in, in terms of academic performance. Um, and one of the data points we got back recently from our elementary schools was the use of a program that we've invested in called Lexia Core 5. Uh, it's a reading supportive program. It helps to diagnose and, and work with students, uh, on their reading. Um, as you remember from the January report, uh, we're not quite where we need to be yet at, at least the state level. However, we've been making some really great gains early on, uh, with some of the supports we've put in place, the extra instructional coaches, uh, trying to get a, a consistent literacy block across the elementary schools. Mr. Dixon, you referenced some of the work that's coming out of our work with the AIM Institute, which we're now in year three of. Uh, we're going to be continuing that partnership on the science of reading moving forward. So, uh, this basically shows from August to October, uh, the increase of students from being below grade level in reading to at or above, uh, grade level. So it's a really big positive right there. We're having big jumps in our reading, um, early on in, in some of the work we've been doing. So back to the grants and again, this, these grants are part of the supports and the outcome of the data is partially what we're using, you know, a, a lot of this money for. So these were the amounts we've received for each of the, each of the ESER grants, uh, just over 500,000 in ESER 1, just over 2 million in ESER 2, over 4 million in ARP ESER and then 337,666 in the most recent, which is the ARP 7% set aside. So our proposal is that by the end of, uh, the 23, 24 school year, which is when we have to have the money spent by, uh, we will have established, uh, multi-tiered systems of supports, MTSS, for students in reading, English language arts, mathematics and social emotional learning. We will have established a centennial virtual learning academy in grades K-12, social emotional and academic learning in grades K-12 and have established support for our 5,000 plus students impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. At the same time, we'll have provided COVID-19 related facilities needs, mental health supports for students and staff through this proposal, as well as again, support for 5,000 plus students impacted by the pandemic. So ESER 1, how does it break down? So we basically have three big buckets, uh, that ESER 1 breaks down into. We have, uh, money spent on purchased professional and technical services like mental health services, professional development for online and remote learning, salary and benefit stipends for summer programming, supplies, web-based tools for online remote learning, instructional supplies and cleaning materials and supplies. And then a part of ESER 1 was we did have to give the non-publics our fair share, uh, their fair share of the money. That was part of the stipulation of the grant. So for ESER 2, uh, it broke down this way, salaries and benefits for kindergarten bootcamp for the blended special education teacher that we're putting in place to help support our virtual learners and again, our, uh, social emotional academic learning coordinator for the district. Again, technical services, mental health, student assistance program, diversity, equity, inclusion in education, professional development support. I mentioned that earlier. That money, money, much of that money is going to the Penn Literacy Network. Uh, we're engaging, we have, uh, about 50 some teachers right now engaged in a course on poverty and teaching with poverty in mind, uh, which has been a really big hit, so big that I think we're going to offer it again, uh, this upcoming summer and the next year. So we'll be able to foot the bill for that moving forward. And then again, teaching and educational materials to address learning loss or unfinished learning and online learning and then cleaning supplies. And the American Rescue Plan, ARP ESER, so in essence ESER 3 is the third grant. Again, you can see, I'm not going to read it to you, but you can see it's, it's expanding the bootcamp, the teachers moving into math specialists for MTSS and academic interventions for our lowest level math students, our tier two, tier three math students, an additional instructional coach at the elementary level, uh, and then again, just furthering the special ed supports and materials to address learning loss. You'll note too, in the notes, uh, in this presentation are further descriptions and definitions of each, most of the, the specifics mentioned here in the slides. And for the 7% set asides, and again, I, we hope you're seeing the theme here is that we're not trying to do just once and dones. We're trying to establish something and carry it through over multiple years, right? I, I think when we talked back in January, one of the challenges we faced was the amount of once and dones, was the amount of very kind of brief, you know, tried to do something and didn't give it a lot of time to really take hold, so we're trying to really put into places, we've talked about systems, uh, and carry initiatives through over multiple years, assess how they're working, change course if we need to or adapt, but really trying to do this over multiple years. So if you look across the three grants, you're seeing a lot of the same in terms of types of supports because we're trying to keep that consistency year to year. Uh, for the last one, this, this was a little bit more specific into how much we could or couldn't spend for certain outcomes. So, uh, out of the 337,000 and change, 48 went to after-school set aside, 48 went to summer school set aside, and then another 241 went to what they call learning loss, which we call unfinished learning. That breaks down even further, which I'll get to in a minute, but for the after-school set aside, it was basically working, uh, on credit recovery through, uh, technology called edgisher to help support our students who were, uh, you know, struggling to graduate. Um, and then the Panther Cubs summer program, we had presented last spring, really helping our, our struggling learners over the summer, kind of get up to speed and try to make up some of the ground that, uh, they might've lost during the pandemic. So for that third area, the learning loss or unfinished learning, that breaks down into three subcategories. Uh, 30% of that budget had to be going towards social emotional learning. The, uh, 10% was going towards social and emotional learning professional development and then 8% was going towards reading improvement and 52% was going towards, uh, other expenditures related to learning loss. So that was a little bit more directive in terms of how we could spend the money, but again, uh, trying to be consistent, trying to look for long-term solutions that took shape over time because we know, uh, growing and improving takes time. Uh, you can see it's, it's a lot of the same type of, of themes that run through. We're looking at, you know, eventually adopting a social emotional learning curriculum throughout the district, uh, getting some universal screeners in, maybe building some libraries for staff and students. Uh, the Hanover research modules, they have some standalone professional development modules that we were looking into around social emotional learning that we think would be beneficial to use with our staff on our virtual, uh, PD. to use with our staff on our virtual PD days. And then obviously, our continued work with AIM, this is helping to support that ongoing work. Another summer, we're going to be trying to offer Panther Cubs over the next couple summers, as well as the Edge Year credit recovery. So I know that was kind of fast. All the information is there. Do you have any questions, Mr. Dixon?
I did have a question. Looking back at the slide that was showing, I mean, all the way back towards the beginning, the reading at grade level.
Yes.
There were some pretty dramatically high numbers there, like in fifth grade, percentage below grade level. I mean, is that, was that for the entire, can you explain that? Like, 84%?
84% of the fifth graders were testing below grade level?
Yeah, like for the entire district?
Right. Well, I mean, this is, this was the conversation we started back in January, right? I think we've had a lot of inconsistency over the past number of years.
Right.
In our, in our programming. We've had older resources that have not been aligned or integrated. We've had resources and buildings that had competing pedagogical philosophies. I think our, our recent efforts over the past two and a half years to try to, first of all, recognize that, and number two, address it in a way that we're operating as one district made up of six schools, not six schools independently in a district, is, is part of the work we're, we're getting into. The AIM professional development is a lot for our teachers, that's why we're taking multiple years to roll it in. Along with that, we're making major changes to curriculum. We're going to be making, making major changes to our resources used to support our students. You know, we, we need to work smarter.
And I, I, I'm sorry with the question, can't, I didn't mean to be accusatory towards you. I was just surprised at the size of the number, and I understand that there were-
It's, it's very high, and honestly, it's high.
Can you guys like, I'm trying to like-
It's okay.
You need a little quiet, please.
We're going to get more detail with a lot of this in the January, the winter presentation, but it's that high all the way up into eighth grade, with students in our upper grades testing at a very low reading level.
I mean, how much of that frankly, you know, like, do we have a sense of like, how much the pandemic basically can, and losing, I mean, you know, effectively, at least full instruction, let's call it, for, you know, that 2020, the way we did? How much of it is attributable to that? Do you have a sense of that?
It's hard to say. We had the Hanover Report, though it was called the Learning Loss or Unfinished Learning Report that we had about a year ago, that showed actually it didn't have huge impacts in terms of where we were headed. You know, our, our bigger challenge has been trying to work with resources and our own programs internally that are aligned to the-
Right.
To reading, the science of reading as well as the-
And I know to your point, this is Dr. Ben's mantra since you got here, that, you know, it's got to be one district, six schools, not, how you put it, like six-
Six schools, yeah.
Six schools, you know, who happen to share district resources.
Well, Mr. Dixon, if you recall, this is, is not very different from when I interviewed for the job and I pulled data.
That would be correct, yes.
And one of the things that was shared by staff is that we were doing a bunch of different stuff, and so we've tried to start creating some focus, but we also heard from staff quite often was data being looked at to inform the decisions. So we're trying to be much more transparent and visible about where our students are and have conversations about student outcome. It doesn't mean that someone's not doing a wonderful program or doing something good, but is it leading to improved student outcomes? And that's where tough choices are being made, and even how we're using ESSR funds to address those issues, which is highly focused on reading and math.
Right.
Even, even the, the, the change with regards to our middle and secondary program, for instance, with bringing in springboard. We're trying to get consistency of implementation with our curriculum and talk about standards-based expectations.
Anecdotal, I mean, obviously, the numbers are improving based on the Lexia stuff immediately, and I could just tell you anecdotally, like, like, my kid loves that thing, comes home every day talking about what level he's on, da-da-da-da, I mean, so.
But you know, to be in fifth grade and be in that situation, it didn't just start during the pandemic.
Oh, no, no, yeah, I mean, it's obviously baked in over years, sure.
Just excuse me one second. So if you want to fill out a card, you can.
I did.
Yeah, okay.
I just wanted to ask a question on this topic.
So you, you can, as soon as we get to the community comments, you can ask a question for that one.
I don't have enough time, because I've got my prepared statements. A simple question.
Mr. Martin?
Take 20 seconds.
We can follow, we can absolutely follow up with it.
Hand me your question and we'll ask it, but I'll, I'll, I have a question that just, and I will admit my, my unfamiliarity with some of the educational jargon, but, and I think I understand what learning is, but could you just give me a simple definition of what unfinished learning is and what social emotional learning is, as opposed to what I conceive as learning?
So unfinished learning is the term we're using in place of learning loss. It's to discuss what kids may have missed during the pandemic, right? Because we, everything got slowed down, we lost, you know, the in-person instruction for a while, so it was how is that impacting our students in terms of not being able to finish a full year, right? Because we all got, we all got the school shut down to, to March, you know, two years ago in March.
No, it's trying to, trying to make that learning up.
No, it doesn't, Mr. Martin. And if you remember doing the Hanover Research, what they uncovered is that the learning loss term, and that more and more has come out about, is a deficit model term that is not accurate across the board. To your very point, we found that when they did analysis, and we can drill down to each student, some students actually did better. While some did. So if you remember that report that we shared with y'all, some students had like X percent where they were before COVID and after COVID lost, some actually made more gains. So they believe, and more conversation has been around, instead of assuming that every student lost something, maybe they didn't get everything they needed to meet their whole potential. So thus, unfinished learning was a much more positive term to use than a-
It's like makeup for those that needed it.
Right, basically, yes.
Okay. Can I, can I ask a follow-up to Mr. Martin on that point? Does that also include, oh, I, hold on, guys, guys, you're not running the meeting, thank you. My follow-up question on that is included in that, in that unfinished learning or whatever? Like, I know that before any pandemics, the standard concept in education was like, you know, kids have the summer vacation, you, you learn a certain amount, like, let's say in fifth grade, then you come back in sixth grade, and there's always that beginning of the year review, and some students need it more than others, that kind of thing. Is that also included in that concept?
It would be like the summer slide.
Right, yeah.
If you remember that concept, right? We always assume that after the, the long break over the summer, kids would come back with a little bit less of where they left off the year because of two months, two and a half months without school.
So is that included in that concept?
It's, it's included, it's the same concept, yes.
No, I don't know, I'm just trying to, I don't understand some of these terms, and I'm just trying to figure out what we're talking about here.
Yeah, please, follow up the other one, I apologize.
So for, just for the, for community to hear, I just wanted to go over what we, for mental health and for student assistance, what we've added to the district, because I know we have a lot of students who are requiring additional assistance with that. What have we added to, to the, you know, for the students to be able to discuss things and, I mean, to help them with what they're going through?
Can I answer Mr. Martin's question first?
Absolutely.
Mr. Martin, are you ready for me?
I'm always ready. Always good, thank you.
All right, you asked, what is social emotional learning?
Postages.
Yes, yes, yes. So I will tell you that the Pennsylvania Department of Education, you know, we have standards, and we have standards for academics, but the Pennsylvania Department of Education has also, Mr. Goddison is shaking his head, this was his wheelhouse, has career readiness standards, and under the career readiness standards, you will see the, the guidelines from the state where social emotional progress and learning falls under. So Castle identifies social emotional learning is the process through which all young people and adults acquire and apply knowledge, skill, and attitudes to develop relationships, manage emotions, and achieve personal collective goals. So it's the self-regulation, it's awareness, decision, responsible decision-making, self-management. That's what social emotional learning is, and it, if you look at the Pennsylvania standards under the career readiness goals, that's where you see the, where we get our, our guidelines for moving forward with social emotional learning. So it's how do we get along those soft skills and even some hard skills that for some students, they have job coaches to do that, but we, to answer your question, the district has invested in a social emotional academic learning coordinator who has been observing, meeting with our school teams, met with our support staff, provided professional development for our teachers during their goal time, administrative professional development. We have nine mental health counselors in the district that we're using to support. We now have 10 groups for students, parents have to, no students attend these groups without parent-written permission. There's a girls' group, there's a boys' group, there's a social media group, but all of the things that we offer to our students that's different than regular curriculum, parents have to give permission. We, we don't even accept permission over the phone. It has to be written, so we don't include kids. We help our teachers with responsive classrooms, supporting students, helping us to self-regulate, so there are a lot of supports. I did do a presentation a while ago, but we do plan on giving a presentation with the update of all of the supports that we have put into place, so I can give you more later, but I, I don't want to take up all of his time, and I know you like me to keep it short.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have a question from Mr. Gabriel as well. We've got all this money, and it seems like it's all being geared primarily towards elementary schools, and we have middle schools that's in corrective action. Do we have a way to maybe create a boot camp or something similar to what we're doing down in elementary school for students that's moving up to middle school?
So two of the positions that we're investing in are middle-level reading specialists, I'm sorry, excuse me, math specialists. So knowing that a lot of the challenges we're having in the upper grades is due to the, you know, challenges we've had in the lower grades over the years, and we've talked about those at length last year. So in order to kind of like, get the upper grades a little bit more stable, we really need to focus a lot of the energy on the lower grades, but we did, we do, to your point, between the Edge Year, between the after-school programming is for the secondary level, some of the tutoring, the credit recovery is for the after-school for the upper grades, and then obviously, the two full-time math specialists, which are student-facing positions. It's important to note, out of the four specialists we've added to the grant, two elementary, two secondary, they are student-facing positions, so that they're working with students in small groups all the way up through, up through eighth grade. And we have included secondary teachers in the AIM training. So many of our special ed teachers are reading specialists, and some of the teachers up to the high school that are hitting some of those lower-level readers in the upper grades currently, which again, over time, we're hoping to see less of, but right now, because of the need and what's been going on historically, we are including them in the, in the mix. You're welcome.
Any other board questions? Thank you, Mr. Gabriel.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Next, we have superintendent reports, Dr. Ben.
Thank you, Madam President. Couple of quick items. One is just to remind the board and the listening audience that we will be approaching inclement weather season, and I would encourage, and we'll send it out in CSD Weekly, but would encourage and remind everyone that we have two locations for inclement weather information. There is a staff one that guides the staff action if we have snow-related or other type inclement weather situations, as well as on the parent page, that information about what to find information and what, what X, Y, and Z means when we have to make a determination about weather. So we just wanted to give people a heads-up that that is coming. As, as you know, the board received a heads-up, and we received a heads-up in regarding, and it's now public, obviously, at the time I wrote this, that the five and 11-year-old vaccination is, is available now, just as we did in the past, both whether it was flu shots, whether it was the, the older kids with vaccination opportunities, the district will have vaccination opportunities. They require parent permission. No student can get vaccination opportunities without parent permission, so that is a choice item, not a mandate from the school district. The, as you heard yesterday, and the board was given notice, we received early warning notice, and then it was public, the update from the governor's office about the mandate being anticipated to go through January 17th, and that then it will shift back to local control, and that is in part due to, they said, the vaccination being available to the younger ages, but also as part of that, they are still maintaining the mandate for early childhood programs because that tool and resource mitigation strategy is not available. It also does not alleviate the requirement on transportation. That still stays in effect because that is a federal mandate that comes down and has not been changed going forward. And Mr. Martin did mention, and I had put a note, that we have had several student outstanding performances, so he shared that already. Also want to recognize over the past month that we had food service, a National Nutrition Week, and to celebrate our food service personnel, and had opportunity to join them in serving lunch, and then also, we had transportation, national transportation recognition. We, and I had a chance to join some of our transportation department staff at a ride-along on the bus. We did take the opportunity to attempt to follow up with all persons who shared comments at last board meeting, so either actual direct conversation via phone or email to respond to those issues. We do also have Addressing Your Questions and Concerns resource that is on our webpage. It actually drops down and tells people who they may want to talk to and contact to get answers to their questions. As I shared with several of those people, oftentimes, the questions that they bring, the board members won't have answers to, and sometimes, if it's a school-based issue, we won't have the answer administratively without going back to the school to follow up on that information. So not being able to or not responding is not an indication of it's not important to the issue, but there is a process and procedure. Everything that happens at a school doesn't come from central office, so we obviously need to reach out to the principal. I encourage, because we want parent concerns and hear them, to, to start with the school when it's involving a student or a school-based issue, to give them a chance to, to respond. And obviously, if they're not happy, then we bring it to the next level to try to get an answer and a resolution to it. But we do welcome and encourage, we try to create a fair and equitable process to the procedures. At times, we try to go beyond what is required to accommodate some of the challenges that we face with the pandemic being upon us, and as we are phasing back into normal situations, we are moving back to normal procedures that have been in place and keeping those things that work well to service the information. We continue to expand information on our website to make it available, and we continue to work on, the CSD Weekly that goes out is pulling anywhere from 4,000 to 5,000 readers, and we can see analytics that show how many people are reading it. So I encourage parents to look at that when it comes, if there are suggestions on how to make it better so that it's more easily readable. We welcome that because we want to make it so that it is a user-friendly communication to help support the exchange of information. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ben. Ms. Heilberg?
Thank you. 4.0, approval of the agenda. Be resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors, 4.1, approves the November 9, 2021 board agenda as per the attached. Are there any corrections that need to be made that are allowed by PA state law?
Ms. Heilberg, I would like to make an addition to the agenda.
Could we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Do we second before we make an addition?
Yes.
Oh.
Um, just for everyone today during executive session, Mr. Pranowski had sent in his, Mr. Pranowski, school board director from Region 2, submitted his resignation. In accordance with Sunshine Act, I would like to open the agenda. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, and can we take a vote on that to add that to the agenda?
You want to roll call or a voice vote?
Um, we can do a- We can do a roll call, it's fine.
Okay, Mrs. Brancato?
No.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Islandberg?
Yes.
Mr. Godickson?
No.
Mr. Martin?
No.
Mr. Lyden?
Yes.
Mr., I'm sorry, Mrs. Crawson?
Yes.
Four, four? I meant, I'm sorry. Two, three. Four yeses, three noes.
Thank you, Mr. Robo.
So that passes to add that item to the agenda.
All right, now that the agenda has been opened, I would like to add item 4.2 to vote to accept the resignation of Mr. Panofsky. Can I get a motion to accept the resignation? Can I get a second?
I'll move.
All right, any discussion?
What is the date of the resignation?
Immediately. Can we take a vote on that? Can I do another roll call? This is to accept his...
Motion was made by Mr. Dixon, who seconded that.
Second.
Okay.
So this is going to be a vote to accept the resignation.
Okay, Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Islandberg?
Yes.
Mr. Godickson?
No.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Lyden?
Yes.
Mrs. Brancato?
No.
Mrs. Crawson?
Yes.
Five yeses.
The school code requires vacancies on the board to be filled within 30 days, so the board will accept resumes of Region 2 residents who are interested in completing Mr. Panofsky's term. Resume letters of interest must be sent to Dr. Bedden's attention by 4:00 p.m. on November 18th, so the board can review them before our next meeting on November 23rd. At that meeting, we will appoint a successor who will serve until December 2023.
I have a problem with that. That's a holiday week, so people that are planning on going away with their families will be excluded. That's a holiday week for most families.
Okay, is there any other board discussion? I want to thank Mr. Panofsky for his service and dedication to the students. Okay. We will now, we will now move to item 5, community comments. The first one would be Chris Bidaya. For the community comments, the first set, the first batch are going to be related to the agenda. The second batch, the second set of community comments are just for whatever the community wants to discuss.
Chris Bidaya from Warminster. Tonight, the agenda included changes to the School Board Policy 903, public participation in board meetings. Although we are thrilled that the violations of the Sunshine Law that have been brought to your attention are being addressed, it appears that the order of things also need to be addressed. Changes should not be implemented, and website should not be updated before the proposed changes are brought before the board to vote. The current policy is dated May 11, 2021. However, the website stated that the public comment protocol was effective August 17, 2021. Right up until last month, the public comment protocol on the website was updated. No data is reflected for the adoption of change, and yet the green card showed up at the meeting on October 12th. To change policy, you need to put it on the agenda, present it to the board, and vote on it before it is implemented. Is there someone in the administration that thinks the board is just a formality, and that changes can be made arbitrarily, and that you can demand the board sign off on those changes before they are already implemented? The law is the law, and any changes to policy requires a vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Kiri Sellers.
I'm a taxpayer, I'm a community member, and more importantly, I'm a parent. We need to address several issues that have come to light recently. It appears that there is a concerted effort to deceive the people of this community. I would like you to address the edit of September 14th School Board Meeting, referring to the two poster boards presented here. I'm mostly referring to the comment beginning with "we also," but "we also." That comment was edited out of the recording of the meeting that was posted on YouTube. The anomaly happens just after the 1 hour, 41 minute, and 8 second mark of the video. Who made the call to alter the recording of the September 14th School Board Meeting? Why was this decision made to remove that statement? We have filed a right-to-know request regarding this information, and let it be known, if this board or any school district employee or administrator destroys, modifies any records, you are in violation of the law. If the meeting is posted in the district's YouTube channel as a record of what transpired at that meeting, and there is no verbiage to indicate that what was viewed is altered, you are effectively communicating that it is an accurate representation of what occurred. However, we know that the recording was altered. We have the original copy. This action was done with the intent to remove specific information from the record. This is an egregious act and breach of public trust, and shows a lack of integrity. Acting with the intent to deceive is not acceptable behavior for a superintendent or any member of the school board of the Centennial School District. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, I have Joan Twig.
My name's Joan Twig, Warminster, PA. Well, just want to start with, we, the parents, have spoken, and we will continue to speak. The minutes of the August 17 School Board Meeting were voted on and adopted at the September 14 School Board Meeting. To make any changes to any action that has been adopted requires the changes be brought before the board and put forward for a vote. On October 13th at 10:07 a.m., the board secretary changed the meeting minutes and quietly re-uploaded them to the website under the direction of CSD Administration in violation of the open meetings law. The minutes are not listed as having been edited. At the file name, and the file name was not modified to reflect that they were edited or updated. We have in our possession an email from Dr. Bedden stating that he is aware of this breach, and that legal counsel said that it is okay, and a vote was not necessary. This is very concerning. It doesn't matter if your attorney gives you improper counsel. The law is the law, and any change to an adopted action requires a vote. What else are you changing without getting approval from the board? Today, we received an email, which this is good news, and I'm very happy to share this, that we will be able to attend our children's winter concerts in December, which is very exciting because we haven't been able to attend them. I would also like to thank the board and my daughter's middle school for allowing me to attend her Student of the Month recognition. It was outside, but I was able to be there after some persistence on being there, so I was very grateful for that, and I just want to encourage parents to, if they don't like the answer, that an exception can always be made, and you should fight. These are precious moments with our children that we're never going to get back. So I'm the kind of person, I used to just go with the flow, but now I'm realizing that you have to, you have to make some noise, and we don't get this time back. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Can I ask a quick question? What is, what is the video, what is this video? What?
It's, I don't, I don't know. It's something was taken out of a YouTube video, is what I'm hearing.
Something was taken out of the September...
Don't worry, we can share it with you later.
No, Chair, so...
I'm not familiar with the timeline, I haven't seen the video, so they're more than welcome to send the video, and we can take a look at it.
This is very deceptive. We have the original, and we have the...
And what I'm saying, Madam...
Losing control here.
What I'm saying, Madam Chair, I will... What I'm saying is, I'm more than happy to accept whatever they have, to look at what's being shown, and follow up with the communications team. So I'm not aware of this, haven't seen the video myself, so I don't know what it refers to, but I'm more than happy to look into it.
Thank you, Dr. Bedden. Okay, next comment is Stacy Hill.
Over the course of the last month and a half or so, several right-to-know requests have been submitted to the Centennial School District. Some appeals have been filed with the Office of Open Records because the district denied and closed several requests without providing the requested information. According to the Office of Open Records, statements of fact must be supported by an affidavit or an attestation made under penalty of perjury by a person with actual knowledge. Under the right-to-know law, the agency has the burden of proof that the records are exempt from public access. To meet this burden of proof, the agency must provide evidence to the Office of Open Records. It appears Centennial School District is submitting affidavits under penalty of perjury that include information that is not truthful. In one case, videos were not turned over because the records officer claimed that the videos were copyrighted. When the Office of Open Records requested the copyright details in the form of an affidavit or attestation of truth, the response was, well, upon further review, they're not copyrighted after all. And in fact, they've been posted on the district's YouTube page in the public domain for two months. The deception in the initial affidavit could not continue when the Office of Open Records asked for required proof. Again and again, we're finding that to avoid transparency, Centennial School District will deceive, lie, and break laws. What are you hiding, and what don't you want us to see? You are tasked with the education of our children. You have an open window into our children's lives every hour of the school day, but we aren't allowed to ask questions about what you're doing during that time? If you cannot be trusted with these small things, how can you be trusted with the people we hold most precious, much less our tax dollars? The parents, taxpayers, and residents of Centennial School District demand accountability and transparency. You are held to a higher standard. The actions of most of this board and our administration are not acceptable and will not be tolerated any longer. You are on notice. By the way, you have been sued by the parents of Centennial School District. We have copies for each of you being distributed now. You have been served. Thank you for your comment.
Next up is Tiffany Budnick. I'm on people cheering at home. Tiffany Budnick, Warminster, Pennsylvania. I am up here as a concerned taxpayer and parent. I have a question to ask the administration. Is the school board meeting posted live to YouTube, or do you edit it in order to remove information you do not want the public to see? I ask this because we have proof that, in fact, they are edited. On September 14th School Board Meeting, when the school board was discussing if the district would mandate the vaccine, the following statement was edited out. But we also are told by the CDC that we are supposed to work in a state collaboratively because we are one of only six jurisdictions to have a health department. Every other jurisdiction that doesn't have one has to work directly with the state. We are trying to comply with the guidance of showing that we are collaborating and working, but we are very specific of putting the words "per" because of the fact that we are not recommending that from us right now. After seeing this, how is the community supposed to trust the administration? I can play the differences, but I ask the community to go on and watch the September 14th meeting, and watch the video skip around 1 hour and 41 minutes in. Record your meeting so that you know what the full meeting is, not just the parts that they want you to see. This is not the only one we found. We found many edits, and I will be more than happy to waste the rest of my time playing the true video. When it's convenient, people want to quote Bucks County Health Department, but it doesn't align with what they think, they want us to ignore it. We've been consistent, and that's why we were very deliberate in putting the words "per" Bucks County Health Department, because we did not want to own that as a district. But we also are told by CDC guidance that we are supposed to work in a state collaboratively because we're one of only six jurisdictions that have a health department. Every other jurisdiction that doesn't have one, it has to work directly with the state. We were trying to comply with the guidance of showing that we are collaborating and working, but we are very specific in putting the word "per" because of the fact that we are not recommending that from us right now. So... So, so... Okay, so now, I will play the video that is on the website. Speak for the other people, like I only speak for me. I respect that. That is, that is not in the plan. And, but I want you to consider what you just said. Okay? I want you to consider what you just said. Things change, which is why I would never, ever, I will, I will... Okay, shh, let me, let me talk. So, so that's what I'm saying. Why, so Bucks County Health Department... If I take that out, then I need to take everything out?
Okay, so, I...
Is it just me, or does that appear...
And watch the YouTube video. Right now, it's quick.
Is it just me, or does that appear to be two completely different parts of the meeting?
So, moving forward, we're going to go to, thank you for that comment.
Can I just mention that this board meeting is not currently streaming on YouTube?
All right, so next, we're going to go to consent agenda. Ms. Islandberg?
Thank you. Consent agenda, does anyone wish to pull anything for six?
Do you have a community comment?
No, there's another community comment.
I was going to talk about the agenda. Remember, you said I was going to give you a second or two?
Okay, so...
About the presentation that they just gave.
Yeah, I would have needed that.
I wrote that on the card, about social, emotional learning, the whole thing. That's what I wrote. They need to get back to my child, because I pay attention to her.
We're going to pause that for a second, and we're going to have Amy Conn's come on up. Sorry, I missed that one.
Amy Conn's, Warminster, Pennsylvania. To my understanding, based on the presentation included in tonight's agenda, roughly $5.125 million out of the $7.382 million of state and federal COVID and ESR funds seen on Slides 13 and 14 of the presentation is being used for diversity, equity, inclusion, and social, emotional learning programs. Although just about every parent can currently say they are concerned about the mental health of their child, under the current circumstances, this seems like a gross misuse of funds. The Lexia Core 5 assessment showed on Slide 9 of your presentation shows the bulk of Centennial students K through 5 are 50% to 80% below grade level as of October of this year. Centennial schools ranked 10th out of the 13 schools in the district in Bucks County. Out of 500 schools in Pennsylvania, Central Bucks is 17th, New Hope-Silbury is 22nd, Lower Moreland is 24th, Council Rock is 34th, Jenkentown is 45th, Abington is 51st, and Pensbury is 59th. Centennial is 195th out of 500. So many students in our district are scoring below grade level. We should not be compromising core curriculum subjects like math, English, history, science, education, physical education, the arts, with diversity, social issues, and anti-racism programs. A wise man once said, "I have a dream that my four little children one day live in a nation where they will not be judged by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character." Children do not focus on their physical or economic differences, and we should not teach them to start. What we should teach them is that everyone deserves to be treated with kindness and respect. With a program named like Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, or DEI, it seems you may not know the definitions or the difference between equity and equality. Equality is equal opportunity. Equity is equal outcome. We should not focus on making all children the same. The priority should be to ensure that we have, they have, all the same equal opportunity. Opportunity is there for all the students in our district. The outcome is determined by the individual. At this point, the children of this district, as well as the parents, are being figuratively beaten into submission. The radical agenda of the majority of this board and administration have been overwhelmingly rejected by the residents of the Centennial School District's community. Please remember, when voting tonight for these programs, darkness cannot drive out darkness, only light can do that. Hate cannot drive out hate, only love... Hate cannot drive out hate. Only love can do that.
No, 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 no. I asked the question when Mr. Gabriel was giving it. You said you'd give me a couple acts per second when we had the community comment.
Is that related to the agenda?
Can I have your card?
This is just my notes. I'll give it to you when I'm done.
Yeah, because I need somebody to get back to you if there's a question that needs to be answered.
I'll give it to you when I'm done. It's just, I scribbled my notes. This is Mike Spaduoto from Warmester, PA, Part 1. On Mr. Gabriel's presentation, I just had a question. With the scores, they were, as I looked at it, they were getting progressively lower, grade after grade. So with the teachers, the marking periods that they have, if they see a student who's struggling in first grade for three or four marking periods, don't, doesn't the caution light go off in first grade? Or does the kid go to second grade, and the scores get worse, and so on and so forth? Wouldn't it be an indicator that these students are struggling, like the first year, they're in one grade, and every marking period, their grades are going down? I think that's something you guys should look at as a board. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just going to write on your second card that you had this question.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Islandberg, Consent Agenda?
Does anyone wish to pull anything from six?
6.2A and 6.2D.
Thank you. Be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors, 6.1A approves the minutes from October 12th, 2021, work session, regular school board meeting. 6.1B approves the minutes from October 26th, 2021, committee of the whole meeting. 6.2, 6.2B, authorization to employ. 6.2C, leaves of absence. 6.2E, mentor. 6.2F, co-curricular additions. 6.5 waivers, none. 6.6 conferences and travel, none. 6.7 bids and quotes, none. 6.8 assemblies, speakers, and programs, none. 6.9 contracts, licenses, and services. Be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors, 6.9A approves retroactively the standard contract for ESY services at Martin Luther School for July 6th, 2021, through August 6th, 2021. For four special education students, district costs $21,000 plus any related services as required by the student's IEP. 6.10, textbooks, none. 6.11, acceptance of donations, grants, and requests. Be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors, 6.11, accepts the Ready-to-Learn Grant in the amount of $380,367. 6.12, changes to academic programs, positions, and stipends, none.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Hearing, none. Passes 7-0.
President, may I ask you a question? I voted for the minutes because I believe they are accurate, but there was a question raised in one of the minutes that I don't know the answer to. Maybe you could provide it. On the minutes of the 12th, I believe, on near the last page, it references a discussion that was held at that meeting in regard to a question that Mrs. Brancato asked, and the subject matter was religious exemptions for employees. And it goes on to say that about executive sessions, blah, 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 blah. And the lawyer got involved. And then it says, "Mrs. Crossen said we would have an executive session before the next school board meeting, and it could be added to the next meeting agenda." My memory is failing, but did we have such...
We did have an executive session, and no, it was not on the executive session. We did meet, what time, at 5:15, but it was not on the executive session.
To discuss that subject?
Yeah, we didn't discuss that subject.
I thought that would be the purpose of... The way the minutes are, that was what was going to happen with that particular subject, and I just... The minutes, I think, are accurate. I'm not questioning the minutes in any way.
Right, and yeah, and unfortunately, we did not discuss it. However, I don't feel it appropriate to discuss for the board because it's certain employees' personal preference. And I don't want to cross a line that I'm not aware that I can cross with talking about somebody's religion. So we do have to discuss it, yes.
Still open-ended, then? Thank you.
Okay, 6.2 personnel, and Mrs. Brancato asked a poll. 6.2 resignations. A second?
Second.
Thank you. Mrs. Brancato?
I wanted to vote on it separately.
So, do you not want it pulled?
I did want it pulled so we could vote on 6.2A separately.
Okay. Did anybody else have any questions on that one?
Is there any particular... I mean, is there something you're concerned about?
Yes, because I feel like, from my information, we have several resignations that people were asked to resign or be fired.
So you want to do a roll call?
I do.
Okay. Ms. Robel?
That's going to be for the 6.2A.
6.2A.
She had it read in first?
She did read, resignations.
That's all it is.
Okay, Mrs.?
President?
Are we ready?
Yes.
You all, of course, can proceed, but if there's any concern, the board is entitled to understand why that option was given to the employees, not mandated to the employees. So if you have any questions, we're more than happy to clear that up because it was an option in lieu of because of what happened.
We can't discuss that here.
No, you could recess, though, if you really needed to. But I want it on the record, because that's a misrepresentation, the way it was presented.
I just don't want to have any part in these people losing their jobs. So I wanted to vote on it separately.
Okay. Ms. Robel, can we please do a roll call?
Yes, on 6.2A, Mrs. Islandberg?
Yes.
Mr. Godickson?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Lyden?
Yes.
Mrs. Brancato?
No.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Crossen?
Yes.
6.1.
Thank you. 6.2D. Be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors, 6.2D, change of status.
Second.
Thank you, and Mrs. Brancato?
I just wanted to vote on that one separately also.
Ms. Robel, could you please do another roll call for 6.2D, change of status?
On 6.2D, Mr. Godickson?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Lyden?
Yes.
Mrs. Brancato?
No.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Islandberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Crossen?
Yes.
6.1.
So next, we're going to have policies. That would usually go to Mr. Panofsky. Can I get... Mr. Dixon, would you please?
Okay. 7.1, the Centennial School District Board of Supervisors presents the following policies for initial distribution and discussion. 7.1A, policy 309, assignment and transfer. Policy 7.1, or 71.2B, policy 903, public participation in board meetings for initial discussion. Any discussion? Moving along. 7.2, the Centennial School District Board of School Directors presents the following policies are presented for adoption... I'm sorry, be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors, 7.2A adopts policy 609, investment of district funds. 7.2B, policy 614, adopts payroll authorization, policy 614, payroll authorization. 7.2C, policy 616, payment of bills. 7.2D, policy 618, student activity funds. 7.2E, policy 618.1, clearing funds. 7.2F, policy 6.28, grants. Can I have a second? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Robel, can we just have a vote, please?
You want a roll call on that?
I don't think it's necessary. No discussion?
And you can call for the voice.
Oh, can I have a voice? Sorry. Voice vote, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any no's? Abstentions? Question carries, 7-0.
Thank you. Okay, so moving forward, we're going to have financials. Mr. Godickson, can I get you to take that?
I'll take care of that, yes.
Thank you.
Does anybody want to pull any of the items? Hearing, none. 8.1, be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors approves the schedule of bills, investments, cafeteria funds, budget reports, and general funds cash receipt summary, October 2021, as per the attached. 8.2, approves the budget of the 2021 budget transfer for October, as per attached. 8.3, approves the pending bills list, as per attached. 8.4, approves the pre-approved paid bills list, as per attached.
Second.
Any discussions? Hearing, none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? 7-0.
Thank you, Mr. Godickson. Board discussion and comments? Mr. Dixon?
I do have a comment. So, a brief preface. I'm sure, like me, I'm sure many of you may have had this experience when you were growing up in your homes. You were a kid, maybe you thought you were clever, or maybe your kids have done it to you, or quite probably both. They come to you and say, or I remember doing this with my sister to my parents, thinking we were cute. Well, how come there's a Mother's Day and a Father's Day, but there's no Children's Day? And of course, the response came, and I'll bet some of you have heard this one before. Well, every day is Children's Day, right? This is the standard parent response to that kind of thing. I bring that up because, at our last meeting, there was a discussion of a book list. Now, setting aside the questions about the process around that book list and whether or not using grant funds for a one-time giveaway is the single best possible use of those funds, those are all legitimate questions, and there might be a better process for that. However, I do want to also point out that, I mean, a lot of those books, and it seemed like we were getting awfully close, awfully close, to suggesting that the problem with the list of books lay principally with the fact that they had to do with people of color and not people who are white, male, and heterosexual. Now, I am white, male, and heterosexual, and I don't want to be excluded or treated differently because of that. I don't think I'm evil because of that. I don't think anybody like that is evil because of it. And I'm not suggesting that, you know, Mr. Martin, I know you commented on it and brought the attention of that interest. I don't think that's what you were saying necessarily. However, I feel like the commentary got a little out of hand. We were very close, I think, to really outright race-baiting on it. We have people of color from all those different areas in this district. And the fact of the matter is, if you're teaching history, the history of the United States, for example, United States history or European history, which are two major topics of history in schooling, the reality is, you're mostly teaching the history of the government. And the government of most European countries, and certainly America, has been dominated by white heterosexual men, which is just a fact. It's fine. So you're going to teach a lot of George Washington, and Thomas Jefferson, and Abraham Lincoln, and James Madison, and Millard Fillmore, and all the rest. My point, my point, is that every day, when you're teaching history, you're going through these kinds of things. History class, if, for people to be interested and invested in, and the same goes for literature class and some of the other liberal arts. You know, people appreciate having voices and that show their background and cultural, you know, cultural background, their gender, this and that. And that's why you have a Black History Month, or Women's History Month, or Latino History Month, because every day, every day, is White History Month, is the answer. And, yes.
Okay, so... No. No one interrupts you when you are up here speaking. No one does. Let him finish his... Whether it's argument or not, no one interrupts you when you're speaking. Let him speak.
My point is not to antagonize... We're better than this. We are better than this, all you angry people here. There's nothing wrong with teaching George Washington Carver while we're teaching George Washington, or Martin Luther King Jr. while we're teaching Martin Luther. That's fine, but what I object to...
That is enough. No one will interrupt you when you are up at the podium. Let him speak.
Look, this is hard, right? I mean, I've got a crowd of hostile...
Thank you, Mr. Dixon.
I have a crowd of hostile people who are going to scream and yell at me and tell me I'm a racist. The reality is, there are a lot of people in this community who were hurt by that conversation, in this Centennial School District community. And it wasn't really very cognizant of their feelings about things. The feeling, the idea that that list of books was a problem because of who it was about, not what it was about.
Madam President, I was mentioned, so I would like the opportunity to respond to those comments. Only because I was mentioned by name in those comments, and I respect Mr. Dixon. That was not the intent of my bringing that to the board. I think a responsibility of board members is to kind of oversee and look into what books are being distributed, what books are being used in the classroom. And the point, if you go back and look at the minutes on TV, which hopefully isn't edited, that I said that parents should have an opportunity to review the books and have input. And that's all parents, not just certain types of parents, all parents, for all students.
Mr. Martin?
And I think that is an important thing to do. I would have brought the list of names with me that tell fifth graders about all the problems with sports and everything to do with sports, which fifth graders don't need to know. That was just one that comes to mind. That was not the intent. You read that into the...
Mr.?
In addition, we oversee taxpayer money, and a one-time expenditure of, I think, a significant amount, $92,000, as opposed to putting books in the library where they have...
$94,000. $94.
$94,000, that's even worse. $94,000, if they're in the library for children to get and use, they have multiple years' usage. Buying a one-time expenditure of those funds for books that were not selected with any degree of parent input, if you give the parents a list of books that they would like to have their children receive, and they check off whatever the books are, whatever they may be, and any book could be on that list, then that's fine.
Mr. Martin?
I try to say the school district is telling you what books your children should read. I think that is wrong, and we shouldn't be done.
I want to be clear. Mr. Martin, yes?
Mr. Dixon?
I want to be clear. Mr. Martin, I did mention you by name because I didn't want to be... I'm not trying to be cute here, right? And, Mr. Martin, I also preface this by saying, you know, your points about whether or not a one-time investment, this is a valid point. You know, do you buy them for the library, or do you send them home? It's a valid point about the process. How exactly do we go about selecting the books? That was not my issue. Nor do I think, as I said, Mr. Martin, that you were necessarily intending it in this fashion. But at one point, if you go back and check the minutes, you turned to the whole group here, because you knew you had them with you, and you said, "There's one group that this isn't about, and we know who it is." That was very, very close.
I would have said that whether the group was here or not, to be honest with you. That's just what I believe.
Let's keep this productive, first of all.
But all I'm saying is, I felt, I felt in my own self, uncourageous in not saying so... saying something in that moment, at the time that it happened, so now I'm going, now I'm saying something. Having said that, I also want to be very clear, I like Mr. Martin quite a bit, he and I, we talk, so I'm not trying to be personal, but I'm also trying to say, we have to be, listen, this is about civility, and how we treat our fellow community members. I understand that there's some frustration out there, about the drift of education, we heard from a woman here about, you know, whether or not the topics are, spending money is the situation, that, what we're spending money on in terms of curriculum, or whatever. I will say, first of all, in that comment, and if she were here, I'm sorry she's left, there is the, and I think educators would be the first to tell you this, throwing money at the problem isn't always the solution, just because you're only spending two and a half million dollars on reading, doesn't mean you're not doing something, it means that there's other ways to spend the money. But second of all, I would just ask, I'm not gonna be on the board anymore, I didn't run again, but I'm gonna ask that, well, but I am asking-
That is not appropriate.
But I am asking, that we have a community of people, we have a community of people who, who can be hurt by stuff like that, and that was not our best moment as a board, and I would ask, going forward, that we think about not doing it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Excuse me. Mrs. Boncato?
Yeah, it's a different, it's a different subject. Earlier today, the young lady said, the Powderpuff Game is on, I'm sorry, on November sixteenth. So it's come to my attention that Powderpuff has always been for the entire high school, and it's come to my attention that it is now not for the entire high school, only the juniors and seniors are allowed to attend. That is a huge football stadium. That is absolutely ridiculous, that all the children in the high school cannot attend. There are siblings that would like to attend their, you know, a freshman, a freshman sibling wants to attend their senior, their senior sibling's Powderpuff Game? That's always been the history of the Powderpuff Game, it is open to every high school student, they buy a ticket and they go. So why are we limiting them, and who made that decision?
I do not have that answer, honestly, I didn't even know-
Dr. Bettin might have that answer, that'd be awesome.
Dr. Best, would you happen to know?
No.
Thank you.
So, that decision was made by the high school leadership team in conjunction with me. We've had a lot of issues this year at home football games with student behavior, our security service that we outsource to has not been able to provide us with any game workers this year, because, like everyone else, they have the same staffing issues most organizations across our nation are facing. We had fights at some of our home football games for the first time in eight or nine years this year, that we felt concerned about the ability to supervise the students effectively, so this is not a COVID-19-related decision, it's a, it's a student supervision situation that we've had struggles with this year.
So what you're telling me is that every child is gonna be punished for the, for the behavior of some?
Exactly.
Yes.
That's not what I'm telling you.
That is what you're telling me.
What I'm, what I'm telling you is that we don't feel we're able to effectively supervise-
We have a lot of administrators, they could all pitch in.
And, and we still, in that case, do not feel like we can effectively supervise the students. And we had parents at those games where the issues occurred.
Thank you, Dr. Best.
That is not fair, that is not fair to punish every child because of some, and I really don't think that that's not right, that is not right.
Okay, so, for reports, district policy report would be Mr. Panofsky, but he is-
I do have a comment as well here, please.
You want to get the police officer in here, is that only from Mr. Panofsky? You're needed. And then, Mrs. Crossen?
Yes.
Would you like to get Chief Donnelly in here, or is that only from Mr. Panofsky?
Yeah.
What are you referring to, why would he come in here? Why would he, why would he be, why did you want him to come in?
Excuse me?
Why would, why did you call him?
He's not here, let's go, we're in the back of the room.
What's, what's the problem? Well, now that Chief Donnelly came in, ask, tell him what you wanted to tell him.
I know about your mother. Okay, 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 okay.
No, I can't hear him up here.
Whatever that is, we don't need it.
I'm not the one, okay, I'm telling you.
He could be going to wrap people up.
He's gonna find me a way to create another picture.
Michael Robert, Michael Robert or Buck Make it.
I don't know which one it is.
His name is Randy Smith.
Thank you, Chief Donnelly. Okay, so, moving forward, um-
Can I make a comment here, as well, please? I just want to thank the audience and the community for coming out tonight, it is very nice to be at a board meeting, and not looking at empty chairs, so I am very pleased to see the community out here. Thank you.
That's all. Okay. So, district policy report was Mr. Panofsky, so he is not here, I don't have that report, does anyone? All right. Bucks BCIU, Mrs. Heilenberg?
I do apologize, I don't have my, a comprehensive report, which I had wanted to have, but I will say that the Bucks County IU is hiring, just like Centennial School District, and they're looking for good folks to apply for jobs. If you are looking for a job, feel free to go over to their website, they have the job postings listed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heilenberg. Then, ten point three is PSBA Representative, Mr. Panofsky, again, I don't have any of his notes. Or Legislative Council Liaison is Mr. Panofsky.
Madam Chair, I can forward to the board the legislative report that IU provides to the superintendents, so I can send that out in weekly report to close a gap on any information for the board related to that area.
Thank you, Dr. Ben. Then we have MBIT, Mr. Goddickson.
Thank you. I do not want to repeat what our wonderful lady from MBIT and our student said earlier tonight, so I would just really refer to last night's board meeting, and there were really just two items that, you know, had any real concerns, and one of them was, well, first of all, there was no superintendent's meeting this month, and there was no work session for the board as well, and, you know, the two items that came up was the policy about social media, and that was tabled, because we did not have enough board members to, you know, push it through, our two fellow board members from Centennial were not present, you know, yesterday. And the last thing that was heavily discussed last night was the Health and Safety Plan that also failed, you know, due to lack of votes, so that is still reverting back to the initial Health and Safety Plan from August. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Goddickson. Any other board communications? Okay, additional community comments, we're gonna start with Mr. Spududo, round two.
Okay, thank you. Mike Spududo, Warminster, everything just about was addressed, I just want to go over this, I'd like to address the spending of taxpayer money. Before you spend a dime, you have to do your, if you spend a dime of our hard-earned money, you have to do your due diligence, research the subject matter prior to spending the money. The board has the final say, so please, ask, ask questions, take your time, you can't make an educated decision without the knowledge of the matter being presented. It doesn't make sense to listen to a five-minute presentation and then have to make a decision. The board should have at least seven days to research and ask questions about the subject matter. Before approving anything, ask yourselves, do we absolutely need this now, and how will it benefit our students? And speak about the books that we spoke about at the last meeting. The books that were introduced at the last meeting, no one read the books prior to bringing it up at the meeting, which I find appalling, that you would just put some, try to put something into the system without reading it, and that goes for everybody, not just the guy who presented it, it goes for everybody, okay? My suggestion is, instead of spending ninety-three thousand dollars, or whatever it is, okay, of the grant money, my suggestion is to purchase five hundred copies of those books, put them in our, distribute them into our library, and notify the parents that they are there available for their child if they deem inappropriate for them. Use the residual money for other projects in the district. With that being said, I ask the board, present and future, to get involved with our tax money and stop rubber-stamping everything that comes up. Look into each major proposal, see if we are getting the best bang for our buck, okay? And do, and do we really need everything and every position that is proposed? I'm looking forward to a change that the residents in this community voted for. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Spududo. Next, we have Paige Mattis. Oh, take your time.
Um, my name is Paige Mattis, I'm an eighth grader in Law College Middle School. Election Day was last Tuesday, and the four school board members who all won, all ran on the promise of making masks optional when they are sworn in December. Is the board really going to remove masks in December? Do you realize how nonsensical that is? I thought the school board was, quote, for the children, but now you guys want to get, let us, let us get sick and possibly die?
Do not speak while she is speaking, no one does that to you, or is disrespectful while you are speaking, please reset the clock.
Even if someone catches COVID and lives, there's still long-term effects like heart and lung problems. I bet you don't want your child going through that unless you're a heartless monster, nobody wants that. Can you wake up already? We're in the middle of a pandemic that has killed over five million people, and if you think that isn't a big deal, that's around one in one thousand six hundred people dead, and I did the math myself, just think about that. Now, kids show less symptoms, but that doesn't mean they can't die from it or spread it to other people. Seven hundred kids in the United States have died from COVID, and most of those were in the last six months. Are you gonna wait until one of those kids is in our district? I'm sure you don't want to see your kids suffering from the long-term effects of COVID, and I sure don't want to see my friends like that either, so please, I am begging you, keep masks mandatory until the pandemic is over. One more thing, people who think masks harm children are just not right, the science backs me up. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking.
You did a very good job.
Next, Tina Cairns.
My name is Tina Cairns, ninety-nine Sylvan Lane, Warminster. I would like to talk about the discussion at the last school board meeting on October twenty-six about books. Using grant money, five books were chosen for the elementary grade levels to, quote, "increase awareness and help make sure that all of the different backgrounds in our community are represented." We are trying to make sure there is a diverse collection of materials that reflects the diverse collection of students that we have here in Centennial, end quote. These books were about Black, Hispanic, LGBTQ, and other underrepresented individuals in literature. A two thousand and eighteen study found that fifty percent of children's books featured white protagonists, twenty-seven percent non-human protagonists, and twenty-three percent protagonists of color. Yes, more books were about non-human characters than characters of color. It is admirable that Centennial is trying to inject some diversity into the books its students read. This is good not only for those students who identify with these races, cultures, and individuals, but also for other students to expand their understanding of the people and world around them. However, at least one board member did not think this was a good thing. They said, quote, "Respectfully, you forgot one group in this listing of books, and that's the majority of people in the district, whom I'm sure you could have found books for," end quote. This board member went on to bemoan the lack of books for the majority three times in the span of a few minutes. Whoever could they be talking about? Centennial students are seventy-one percent white, eighteen percent Hispanic, four percent Black, and three percent Asian, so the majority of students are white. The words "white majority" were what they had so carefully tiptoed around. I could not believe what I was hearing. This was said and tolerated at a Centennial School Board meeting, and is an embarrassment and disgrace for our district and township. One last point, the same member started listing book titles during the meeting, quote, "I suspect there is an underlying message in these books, I will cite a few examples, one is called, My Family Celebrates Day of the Dead, I have no idea what that is about," end quote. The Hispanic community is the largest minority population in Warminster and Upper Southampton. If I were this board member, I'd put My Family Celebrates the Day of the Dead at the top of my book-reading list. We don't want our students to have such a narrow view of the world. We need to do better and be better. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, community comment, Michael Megavan?
Thank you. Michael Megavan, Warminster taxpayer. At the school board meeting held in August, I listened as parent after parent, and even some students expressed their concerns over this body's decisions. At some point in the proceedings, I felt called to the floor to make some comments, and I said things that echoed what had already been said. I also wagered that the board would have our words go in one ear and out the other. I also said that if the board chose to ignore the expectations and wishes of the parents, I'd make it a point to do whatever was necessary to get all of you out and replaced by board members who would listen, and allow parents to be involved in how their children would be treated at school, and what they would be taught. So, I emailed, I canvassed, I talked, I worked for the candidates, as did many of the folks out here in the audience, and I spoke to known candidates who would bring normalcy back to our schools if they were elected to the Centennial School Board. Despite slanderous and libelous activity from an individual in our audience against one of our sitting board members, there was a successful, successful sweep of the seats on the board, and that should be a ringing cacophony in that space between your inattentive ears right now. Question, are you listening now? These kids and their parents do not need masking or vaccine mandates continuing to give them anxiety, nor do they need a curriculum designed to drive social and emotional wedges between them. Teaching critical race theory, or do they use the more touchy-feely misnomers diversity, equity, inclusion, and social-emotional learning undermines all that is truly desired for equality? You likely hear very powerful quotes on equality, everyone gets a chance, and equity, everybody gets a trophy, from other speakers this evening. Additionally, lessons related to gender identity, sexual preferences, and limited pronoun usage have no place in the classroom or school environment. Topics of this nature belong to the parents, as they raise their children to be respectful to all of our brothers and sisters of the human race. We stand in opposition of the methodical indoctrination of our kids, they are not your political or social agenda pawns. In closing, I simply offer this. Father God, give the incoming board members the ability to listen, and the wisdom to do all that is right and best for our students. Give them strength to manage the challenges from all opposition, give them guidance and insight in their efforts to raise this school district to a level for all to be proud.
Thank you for your comment.
And Father, help those who are leaving to see the errors and actions of their ways so that-
As I appreciate your prayer, your community comment is over.
Amen. Thank you.
Amen.
All right, next community comment is gonna be Lauren McRae.
Lauren McRae, Warminster, two weeks ago, I asked the board why my son couldn't go to the farm and had to watch a video on the farm instead. The board responded by saying they are allowing field trips, and I should have asked the school first, they offered to go to Willowdale to find out what was going on, they acted like they had no clue. I later found out that only nine field trips had been approved, only three were true field trips, and were at the high school level, science trips to BCCC, University of the Sciences, and East Stroudsburg University. Also, at Tenet, there was a- Also at Tenet, there was a soccer game, a robotics competition, and a magical performance. Log College has a trip planned to Six Flags in May. The only trips at the elementary level were transportation between Davis and McDonald's for honors, uh, band and orchestra. I find it interesting that not one of the three elementary schools had any trips planned for the entire school year. Were teachers not told, uh, told not to plan trips because they wouldn't be allowed? That's what some teachers are saying. An administrator told me that my child's school will have one trip per grade after the new year. It's interesting to think that five schools had no intention of planning field trips until the spring, and the board didn't note this. The board response, the board's response to me was deceptive in that only two out of six schools had a total of four real trips planned. I'm noticing a pattern with policy, it's that once it's changed and freedoms are taken away, they don't come back until people speak up. Is that what happened? Was the policy "no field trips" last year, and that changes were just not communicated for this year? There is disregard to what is important to parents and taxpayers. You don't care how I feel because it's not of importance to you. What is important, what is important to me is in the way of your personal agenda. I expressed my concerns about the staff testing required, um, their DNA to be harvested for ten years for unknown purposes. My email went ignored, and when I called out during the last meeting, a board member laughed hysterically. The majority of this board is out of touch with what the majority of the community want, and, by the way, we're not bad people, um, and does not support the extreme agendas and policies of the board. We are seeing the fallout of these extreme policies as many staff members are resigning. It's a suffocating environment, and they are easily finding worse elsewhere. We need politics, oh, I'm sorry, policies conducive to retaining staff, not ones that make them run. It's confusing to me how you ignore our pleas and then complain how we make a big deal out of things, like how every other school is going on field trips using lockers and having the option of in-person conferences. You are the ones breaking the law, meeting after meeting, and then shame us for holding you accountable by speaking out. You won't give us an inch because you have an agenda, and it's not ethical to force your own personal liberal agenda on other people's children. It is a complete lack of respect for others who live differently, and I would never push the way I live on other people's children. When the pendulum swings too far in one direction, you can always expect it to swing right back the other way. You should have walked down the middle path because we all ultimately have the same goal, and that is the best possible outcome for our kids. It's time we start focusing on our commonalities instead of our differences, and instead of installing the person who lost the election, which you're going to do because the former board member had announced basically that that's what you're going to do, I think is shameful, I think is really shameful. And at no time in history have people forcing others into compliance have been the good guy's freedom.
Next comment is Nicole Renier.
Nicole Renier, Warminster, PA. Hello, for those of you who may not know me, um, I went K through 12 through Centennial School District. I currently serve as a Violence Prevention Policy Specialist working in the realm of dating and domestic violence, which includes bullying. Bullying is something that many students struggle with, often because they don't fit in with their peers or the majority of people around them. To be different can be extremely isolating and lonely, especially as children develop and grow into adulthood. I wonder how many people in this room can remember a time when they didn't fit in with the crowd due to some part of their identity, what that felt like, especially as a child. I imagine those who may be struggling to remember such a time would identify themselves as part of the majority. I want to explain to everyone listening that those with any minority status have a disproportionate burden placed on them to fit in. For example, students who identify as LGBTQ have higher rates of suicidal ideation and struggle more academically. I question why any board member would want to perpetuate this isolation and exclusion for any student from the majority. Might I remind everyone, too, that one of the fundamental responsibilities of school board directors is to, quote, "ensure educational opportunities for all students of the school district." Let me repeat that, "for all students of the school district." I was appalled at comments made at the last meeting, calling dismissed books designed to help students who aren't part of the majority fit in, to help indicate to them that they too are included and just as important and valuable as any other student. I can't help but wonder as well, how many school board directors here remember the case of Brown versus Board of Education? More specifically, a fundamental part of that ruling called "The Doll Test." The Doll Test took young children and asked them to choose between Black and White dolls, to which they chose the White dolls. Even Black students chose the White dolls. Psychologists detailed the harms this had on Black students, the way the desire for whiteness made them feel inferior and caused devastating impacts, a reason why schools are now desegregated. I encourage you to read more into those accounts, they're heartbreaking but integral to how we move forward in our educational institutions to in fact ensure that all students are valued equally. I want to also say, like one of our board member's grandsons, I too cheer on the Phillies and the Flyers, and that, yes, there are people of color on those teams, but there also aren't any women. It's important for young girls, especially girls of color, to see themselves reflected in professional sports, too, which is why the book about Naomi Osaka is vital to education. And get this, it also teaches boys that professional sports teams can also include tennis. I question what it is that any school board director is afraid of with these books. The inclusion of these books opens opportunities for children, for students, why would we want to limit that? Aren't schools literally institutions of education? Isn't the point of education to learn something we don't already know? To expand our horizons so that we can grow and prosper? I hope everyone here tonight thinks about this, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, next comment is going to be Heather Zeigle.
When I spoke the first time about two months ago, I addressed the board that due to the dictatorship and controlling tactics that this administration has been demonstrating, that you will see good, valuable, and irreplaceable employees leaving. Well, guess what? Employees are leaving. So how many more employees do you want to see, do you really want to lose? We, the community, know what is best for our school district. You are not focusing on what is best for this school district. If you were, our school district test scores would not keep dropping, our irreplaceable employees would never think about leaving, and our students would be able to improve and thrive. As of now, the reality of this school district is you, that you are focusing on, is embarrassing, disgraceful, and unacceptable. We talked about the reason why we're not having the Powderpuff game with all the students. Maybe if we didn't focus on diversity and teaching diversity to our students, then you wouldn't have kids fighting on school grounds, because, because everyone is equal in God's eyes. Thank you.
Okay, so, thank you for your comment.
Mrs. Crossen.
Mr. Dixon.
I just want to say one final thing here, um, and to Mr. Martin, because, uh, I, I did not know that my colleagues, or my, the Ms. Cairns, and obviously they ran for office, Ms. Cairns and, um, uh, Ms. Renier were going to be here, I thanking them for, thanking them for their comments. I wouldn't mean to single you out personally, I mean, again, I was trying not to be cute. I know Mr. Martin to be a man of good character, and I don't think that that was really, I don't think any of his comments were coming necessarily from a place of true, uh, you know, hatred or anything like that, that wasn't the point. But the point was, still, we have to manage how we discuss these things and know that our words mean things to people, that's all. And I'm saying, you know, as an exiting member of the board, uh, we could do better than we did at that last meeting, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Moving forward, um, schedule board meeting and calendar events, Mr. Goddixon.
Thank you. On the following board meetings and on the calendar, Tuesday, November the 16th at 7:00 PM, BCIU Board Meeting at the BCIU in Dorristown. Thursday, November the 18th, 6:00 PM, MBIT Open House, it's a virtual presentation, as mentioned earlier today. Tuesday, November the 23rd, 7:00 PM, Centennial School Board Meeting, Committee of the Hall, right here in this boardroom. Wednesday, November the 24th, all schools closed. Thursday, Friday, Thursday through Friday, November 25th, 26th, all schools and offices closed. Friday, December the 3rd, early dismissal, K through 5. Monday, December the 6th, 7:00 PM, Centennial School Board Meeting, Reorganization Meeting, right here in this boardroom. Monday, December the 13th at 5:30, MBIT Executive Council Meeting, this meeting has been canceled. Tuesday, December the 14th, 7:00 PM, Centennial School Board Meeting, regular meeting, right here in this school, uh, this boardroom.
Thank you, Mr. Goddixon. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
移到
Thank you. Meeting adjourned.